Good evening, and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting for the 22nd of October 2019. As always, let us begin with a pledge of allegiance to our flag, voted by a silent moment of prayer and our reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and please be seated. This evening, we have four appointments before we get to our new business. The first appointment will be the monthly meeting with Chief William Brooks in our Police Department, giving his monthly report, and I think he has something extra for us this evening also. Chief Brooks, if you will.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, the reason I'm not here alone is because, as we've gone through our hiring, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce a couple of new officers to you and, by extension, over cable, to the folks at home. So, sitting to my immediate right is Officer Justin LaRoche. Officer LaRoche comes to us as a lateral transfer from Rhode Island. He had over ten years of experience as a police officer in Rhode Island. As it turns out, his wife is one of the new employees or is an employee at the new Moderna. And he was looking for police work here, and he approached us. He's got a, he's had an outstanding career, has a college degree, and we took him on as a lateral transfer. Then, my far right is Officer Sean Jennings, who is a more traditional candidate, and that he just graduated the police academy recently. He's just entering Phase Two of his field training program. His field training will be a little bit longer than Officer LaRoche's because he's really starting from scratch. And that's the reason why on my left is Officer Rick McGowan, a wily veteran at this point, but he's one of our field training officers, and he's breaking in Officer Jennings tonight. So, as you know, and I think as the board knows, when we bring on a new officer, whether it's a transfer or one who's graduated the academy, they go through a period of field training under the watchful eye of an FTO who breaks the man. So, that's why Officer McGowan is with us tonight. I'd also add that we have two other officers at the police academy, the newer police academy in Bourne, and they'll be graduating next month. And we are in the process of filling three vacancies that are coming around over the course of the next couple of months due to our retirements of current members of the department. As far as what's been going on this month, we had a, see, the fire chief is here for his appointment as well. We had the joint open house, which was a huge success, where the building was open from ten to two. Families came through and sit in a cruiser and see the cells and see dispatch and on the fireside and they'll go into the apparatus floor and sit in the apparatus and visit with the fire department and see their demonstrations and so forth. So, that was a, that was a successful day. We've conducted evacuation drills at all Norwood public schools over the course of the last four weeks or so. These are in conjunction with Norwood Fire. Again, they qualify as a fire drill, but they're also along the run, hide, and fight that we've been teaching in the schools, that should there be a non-fire event in one of the schools, that the faculty and staff at the schools are trained in how to evacuate the school, how to go to rally points that are pre-designated. Our officers all respond and assist with that. Fire is on scene as well, as I mentioned, and we've successfully conducted those drills. The school department has successfully conducted those drills with our assistance over the course of the last month. All schools have been done. You may have seen, or people may have seen on social media, that we're collecting Halloween costumes for families that might use some help coming into the next week, getting their kids outfitted for Halloween. That's being led on our side by Officer Jeffrey Beguma, and I know he's had a lot of assistance from the schools, particularly the elementary schools, who are also doing some collections. We've got a full bin of costumes. Next Monday, there'll be an event at the police station that you'll be hearing more about. Families can come by and we'll have some candy and some decorations and that sort of thing, and people who have a need, who want to pick up a costume can do that. They'll all be sectioned out by age groups. This is a brand-new project, and we hope that it becomes an annual event. Officer Beguma's put an awful lot of time and effort into it to try to help out folks that could use a hand. And then, speaking of public events, as you may have seen, the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration is conducting their Fall Drug Takeback Day. That is going to be Saturday from ten to two. As we always do, we'll be participating in that, and our evidence officer will be on scene. And we always have a kiosk at the police station. We're open 24/7, obviously, but this is also a time when people can come in the lobby and drop off bulk unused prescription drugs. This year, the Drug Enforcement Administration is also accepting vaping products and vaping cartridges. It's the first time they've accepted that sort of stuff, so people who have that and want to get rid of it can come into the police station, they can drop that off as well. So, that's pretty much what's been happening at the police department for the last month, and happy to answer any questions of the officers' hours as you'd like.
Gentlemen, any questions on the particular report itself?
Just a couple. First, I would welcome you young men to the town and look forward to meeting over the course of the years. And I know you can be great because we have a great chief and is a great leader.
Thank you.
Chief, when you commented on the evacuation drills for Norwood, how often during the course of the year do you possess a curfew, Chief Maurice?
We do them, we do them at least once, and in the past, we've done the mid-year, and this year, there was an effort to get them done earlier. I know that on the fireside, Chief Maurice could answer this part of it, I think, but I think there's a need for them to do a fire drill early in the year. And this year, we made an effort to do an evacuation drill early in the school year that coincided with their first fire drill.
So, typically, you do more than one through the course of a school year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to Officer McDonough for meeting with Norwood Football about the vaping. Any feedback from the players themselves or the kids regarding the whole issue regarding vaping? Just curious.
You know, I haven't gotten any particular feedback. You know, we try to be as involved as we can at the schools, particularly around issues of their safety and health. I think we're all concerned with what we're seeing around the vaping issue.
Yes, we are.
So, you know, the sale or display of those products, obviously, is now banned as a result of the governor's executive action, but it's a concern for us, you know, just in the surveying that's being done of school kids. We know that, you know, vaping levels are high and vaping is on the rise, and so it's good that Officer McDonough was able to do that.
And a lot of positives, looking at the report of Jim Mahoney and Paul Murphy regarding all their efforts with the schools, including St. Catherine's, a lot of positives, I think, is great, so please thank them, at least for me, and I thank them out loud. I mean, assisted St. Catherine's with the lockdown drill, drills at all the elementary schools, collaborative problem-solving training. They worked Norwood Day, they attended the Norwood Football varsity game, the freshmen, sophomores, senior class meetings, Norwood Co., Impact Norwood Meetings, and on and on. So, it's great with the involvement, and I think that's great for the community and great for them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jah. Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Jah. Chief, speaking of vaping, what are your thoughts on the issue? I mean, we have the governor now doing what he did, we have our Board of Health doing what they did. What do you think about all that?
Actually, and it's not a police matter, it's really more a public health matter. These are not criminal sanctions, and the ban doesn't carry criminal sanctions, it's more regulatory under the governor's authority. But, you know, I'm alarmed, quite frankly, by the amount of vaping we see, and you're seeing these deaths now starting to occur around the country. I think you're going to see more and more of it to be THC-related than nicotine-related, and I think that there's some sort of effort to delve into that, to figure out exactly what's causing these deaths. I don't know anything more about it from the health side. It doesn't look like a healthy thing to me when I, you know, when I see it, but particularly taking THC concentrate and inhaling that, or steam, you know, my senses, that's probably not very good for people at all. My concern is we won't really see the health effects of this stuff. You know, well down the road, you're seeing some fatalities now, but I think you don't see, you know, I hope not, but I wonder if we'd see chronic health effects down the road.
It does seem, I know very little about it myself, but it does, it does seem like that with certain types of it, that they're ingesting these things, liquids and other things, that stay with them and seem to be a substantial problem. And that's the part that really concerns me, you know, you know, overall of it, as you've said, that today, you know, they're feeling pretty fine, but down the road, you know, it doesn't seem too good.
Well, as we know from research, one of the drivers behind really abuse of any product is the kid's perception of harm, that the less that kids perceive a harm in a particular substance, the more likely they are to experiment with it, and that's my overarching fear with, same with marijuana and THC. And quite frankly, I think it's part of vaping also, that when you have a product that you offer, that you sell commercially, that you sell out in the open, that's lawful to sell, that more and more people are likely to try that. And then, if it's got health effects, I think society ends up kind of catch-up, catching up, like happened with tobacco, you know? It took years and generations to try to turn that life ship in another direction, and now we have kind of vaping coming around. So, I'm actually glad to see things kind of slowing down until we know more about it.
That you say tobacco and down the road, prime example, a very close friend of mine smoked two, three packs a day all his life, 58 years old, double-lum cancer, two weeks later gone. Boom. So, anyways, thank you, Mr. Jah.
Just a comment, Mr. Jah, on that same issue, is vaping is still using nicotine, which is the addictive drug. So, people think, oh, I'm going to switch from cigarettes to vaping, you know, I'm better off. Well, they may be slightly, but they're still smoking or inhaling nicotine, which is the addictive drug that we need to be concerned with. So, it's no health.
Thank you, Mr. Jah. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to Officer LaRoche and Officer Jennings. Welcome to Norwood. I suspect from your presentation here tonight that you are going to make your field training officer's job quite easy. So, welcome to the town. We look forward to working with you. Chief, just a question from me. I know one of the things that we hear about from our school resource officers, like Officer Mahoney in particular, and one of the things in your report has to do with things like threats on social media, you know, to the schools which can be dismissed. How do you, what is the process by which you determine the legitimacy of any kind of threat or remark or anything on social media? How do you tell?
It's, I think it's more of a science. It really depends so much on the nature of the threat, the origin of the threat, if we can tell that. You know, sometimes somebody will see a posting, it'll be a picture, it'll be a kid holding what appears to be a firearm. You know, we have to try to trace that posting back. Sometimes we do that with digital forensics by, you know, looking at the phone or looking at, you know, where the particular image came from. Other times, you're looking for clues that are in the photo itself. Then, there'd be other threats that are overt threats or direct threats, you know, verbal threats, or somebody actually texting another person a particular threat. So, it kind of depends on the nature of threat and where it comes from. We always act on them immediately, right away. We always presume that they're valid until we prove that they're not. We always investigate in that direction. And then, there are other steps we take that I wouldn't talk about publicly, that we try to determine the level of validity. But essentially, these investigations are threat assessment investigations, where we try to determine the origin of the communication, its validity, you know, in its context, where it came from, you know, like I said, that there are steps we take, oftentimes in conjunction with the schools. Sometimes when these things occur, it comes through the school, student, tell a teacher.
The school people can be helpful, I mean, do parents help out?
Parents help out, you know, typically, if it involves a particular kid, obviously, we talk first to the parents, and we're looking for certain information. Sometimes, we're looking to see, you know, what the child might have with them as far as, you know, material, and sometimes it's traveling over the phone, it might be traveling over Snapchat, it might be traveling over Instagram. So, in this digital world where communication flows on so many platforms, we have to, we have to keep up with that. And quite frankly, any of these, any of these threat assessment investigations we do tends to be a little different than the one we just did. They all look a little different, but, and again, I don't want to get into all of the details. You and I could discuss it one-on-one or in a different setting, but there are steps we take to try to determine the validity of the threat.
We wouldn't want to get into any areas that we shouldn't. It's more a question of just sort of, you know, what parents and kids should know, but I think a lot of it probably is common sense and, I mean, report it, right?
Well, for parents, you know, they should be looking at their kids' phones, they should be looking at their kids' communications. They should be actively involved, they should know who their kids are communicating with. You know, back in the day, you know, when I was growing up, the kitchen phone rang, and my mother and father always answered it, and it was always, may I ask them, please, may I tell them who's calling? You know, my parents knew everybody calling into the house. It's not that way anymore, you know? Communication travels over devices, you know, person to person, and it doesn't always go through a parent. So, to the degree that parents can pay attention to the communications involving their kids, they have open communications involving with their kids, to the extent that children and parents feel comfortable coming forward when there's something that makes them feel uncomfortable or questioning the origin of a particular communication or they think something sounds suspicious. We have not yet investigated a threat where we feel that we stemmed violence by investigating. Any of the threats we've investigated thus far, we have been able to put them to bed as not being genuine threats, or something being a misunderstood communication or something like that. So, but still, we take every threat as if it's, as if it's real until we can prove otherwise.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Welcome to the offices. Good to see Officer McGowan. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Chief, I have no questions about your report. I am fine with that, but I just want to welcome the new officers formally to the town of Norwood. I want to thank you for choosing Norwood, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. My personal opinion, this is the greatest job you could ever do. It gives you an opportunity every single day in your career to make a difference in somebody's life. Some of it's positive, some of it's negative, but you have the control of which way that goes, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Good night. Thank you.
Our next appointment is with Chief George Maurice, Norwood Fire Department, submitting his monthly report. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to start off first by thanking the board, the town manager, the finance committee, and of course, Town Meeting for supporting the fire department, our funding for equipment for our new engine. Unfortunately, prices had risen, and the amount of money we received from Town Meeting was not enough to cover equipment, so we had to solicit more funding, and we did receive that. So, I would like to thank everybody for doing that, supporting us. As Chief Brooks had mentioned, on Saturday, October 12th, we had another successful open house. It was always the Norwood Fire Department open house, and now it's somehow become the Norwood Police and Fire Open House. I don't know how Chief-
Not a bad thing.
I don't know how he's pulled that off, but somehow, he is the master of that. But I'd like to thank Lieutenant John Cody, firefighter Paul Ronco, Captain Mike Costello, and Group Four for their efforts in making it a success. And the fire department is always happy to help out at trunk or treat and the pumpkin float, the great work that the rec. department does, Travis and Katie. I wanted to congratulate Chloe and Duga on winning the first Norwood Day Fire Truck coloring contest. She's a beautiful little girl, seven years old, and just an excellent job she did coloring the fire engine and the sky around it. So, I chose her out of a lot of great pictures, and she received a fire truck ride from myself and Engine Two, along with her sister and her father, to the Cleveland School, so.
Very good.
I was happy a fellow Cleveland School student like myself from a long time ago.
And like I.
So, that was, that was great. And for all the kids, thank you for turning your pictures in and actually coloring the pictures, and they're being displayed in the lobby of the third floor at the fire station. So, if you're up there, please check it out.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to mention, I did have a few citizens from the town come up to me, expressing a little bit of concern about Avalon Bay with the main building. The main building is divided into two sections, one closer to Plimpton Ave., one, the other side, closer to Manhattan. People will be moving into the section that is closer to Plimpton Ave. Construction will still be going on on the side closer to Manhattan Street, but I want the public to know that there is a firewall dividing those two buildings, so there's not a fire safety or life safety issue there. The section that is complete, closer to Plimpton Ave., also is fully sprinkled, so. I did have a few people ask me about that, and I want the public to be aware that-
Well, basically, it's all up to code the way it should be.
Absolutely, yes. I wanted to extend a big thank you to Norwood Police Officer Greg Shore. I had mentioned it at the last selectmen's meeting, but he came to the fire department and gave us a condensed version of his mental health and well-being class. I actually took the class with one of the crews myself, and I'd have to say, he is excellent at what he does. Hopefully, in the spring, funding allows, we'll have him back for the second half of the class. So, I wanted to thank Chief Brooks and Officer Shore for that. And the last two things I wanted to mention, and I don't know if it's been brought up at the selectmen's meeting, these are safety issues, but the MBTA has started a pilot program with, it's called the Foxborough Pilot Program, and there are MBTA trains that are running through Norwood from Boston to Foxborough, but they are not stopping in Norwood. And I don't know if that's been mentioned, so I want the public to be aware that ten outbound trains and ten inbound trains will be coming through the town, and they will not be stopping. So, do not assume that the train is going to stop like we've normally had in the past. The gates go down, be aware of that, and do not try to cross the road.
Now, Chief, when you say ten, are you talking daily or weekly?
Daily.
Daily.
During the week.
So, that's basically twenty trips.
Correct. So, I just want the public to be aware, we did have an incident with a gentleman this past year, unfortunately, and I just don't want to see that happen again, that there are trains that are not stopping in Norwood, so.
So, they blow the whistles as required, but they don't necessarily slow down?
Correct. And I think some, sometimes the public may not be aware of that, they just assume it's stopping at the depot on Norwood Central.
Very good. Thank you. Good information.
And the last thing is, as we all know, every year, the end of daylight savings is Sunday, November 3rd, coming up in a few weeks. So, we always say, do not forget to change your clocks, change your batteries. The old-style smoke detectors have removable batteries, usually nine volts, so while people, if you think of it, when you're changing your clocks, check out your smoke detectors and replace the batteries and make sure that they're working correctly.
Good information. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Howard, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Chief, you wouldn't happen to know about Avalon Bay, when the road to there will be opened up for the public to go through there?
I do not know that.
Because I noticed that the other day, that they have a fence-
Correct.
-halfway through.
Yes.
And I presume that at some point, that'll be coming down.
It will be. The reason why they put the fence up is that they're working on the section closer to Manhattan Street, but they have residents already in some of the units-
Right.
-and they're coming in via the Plimpton Street side of it. So, they put the fence up so they cannot go through with the construction currently going on.
Oh, it's mainly them, huh?
Yep. So, when that eventually gets done, they'll remove the fence, and I can try to find out when that would be.
No, that's okay.
I think they're looking at full occupancy in November.
Really? Sheesh.
Move right along.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Anything, Mr. Maloney?
No, I think I'm all set. I was actually going to ask the same question about the road, but there are actually, there are going to be two ways through Avalon Bay.
Correct.
Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you have seen them as satisfactory to us from the-
They are. I know the Plimpton Ave. side, we were concerned about actually accessing that side with trucks, not so much for Norwood Fire, because we'd be coming from Manhattan Street, but if for some reason we had to call mutual aid companies, say, from Sharon or Walpole, that they would have the correct access getting in. I think their best bet is a straight shot from Lenox Street, but we have looked into that and made sure that everything is accessible.
Okay. And your trucks, will we be able to go through there to access, say, South Norwood?
I don't think we would do that. I think we have faster routes instead of trying to go through a residential area like that. Obviously, people will be out and about. I think we're better off using Washington Street to get to South Norwood.
You know.
Thank you, Chief. I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you. I think of the layout also, the way it was, the original concept and the original project was straight through. This one, it kind of loops around, so it would be a little more difficult.
That may have been to slow traffic down.
Exactly what it's for, but it would be more difficult for a large fire truck to maneuver through there on its way to South Norwood, say, for instance. Thank you. Mr. Jah?
Just a comment, Chief, on, and for all of us, that the revenues regarding the ambulance were flat compared to-
Correct.
...last year. So, I just, a word of caution to all of us when we're talking about revenues and what we're doing is, I think Tony had already pre-warned us that we're pretty flat compared to last year, so just for our public consumption as we head into the next budget.
I guess on one hand, I could say that's a good thing that we haven't had as many sick people and-
Right, that's true.
-and picking them up in the ambulances, but hopefully, in the future, we could increase that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
All set.
Chief, thank you for your report. Unless you have anything else to add, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have about five minutes before we have our next appointment, which is a public hearing required at 7:30. So, if we could, I'd like to move on to new business, if we could, for a few minutes. Number one, Joseph A. Collins from the general manager's office submitting a signature of the board for a sewer service agreement at number 10 Countryside Lane, Walpole. This is a family that wants to get off a septic system. They are living in Walpole right on the line and hook up to the Norwood sewer system. Comments from the board?
I think we've heard that Walpole's actually not voting until next Monday, so I would suggest, I think we have said, to wait a week. Also, I have a question about one of the paragraphs, the word "shall" versus "may", that I'd like to review with Mark Ryan upon his return Thursday.
That'll be fine, and I'll tell you why, because in the agreement itself, it calls for, and I'll quote, "The owner must first seek approval from the town of Walpole to connect their home with the town of Norwood sewer system." So, Walpole is not meeting until the beginning of next week, so whatever we do tonight really won't matter much, depending on what Walpole says one way or the other.
I second that motion.
So, we, the motion is to postpone this transaction for one week until the town of Walpole has an opportunity to meet and make their decision.
On the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, I think our paperwork is in pretty good order here, but I agree with Mr. Jah here, a question, if we have a question or two about what's in front of us, we should, we should talk to our own people, too, and that'll be next week. So, why don't we let Walpole go ahead, and we'll discuss it next week.
And I would also, lastly, give Mr. Plasko an opportunity to be here in case he has any input, one way or the other. So, we have a motion to postpone for one week based on the information we just gave out, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
May I interject?
Yes, sir.
My name is Rob Delisle. My signature is on that application.
Correct. You're the homeowner.
That's correct. This is a process that we've been going through since-
Many months.
Yes. My understanding with Walpole from the beginning is that they have been fine with this, that they said they didn't need to bring it in front of the board unless Norwood asked them to. So, in my discussion with Rick Mattson, the head of DPW, he said that there's absolutely no question as to they are for it. They're really, there's no digging on their land, there's no question. So, they said they're ready as soon as Norwood signs off.
Okay, and I respect the fact that it's taken many, many months for you to get to this point, and I apologize for any delays that you may incur, but we have to go by the information that we received through Town Council and so on and so on. So, we would prefer to have something either verbally, in writing, from the town of Walpole, whether they meet or do not meet, that says that it's okay with them. So, if you would be in communication with them for any reason, I would suggest that. So if you would be in communication with them for any reason, I would suggest that. In the meantime, we'll take it up next week, and I don't see a problem moving this along next Tuesday night. And again, I apologize for any delays.
Okay. So there's nothing else that I should be doing other than waiting for that meeting in Walpole?
No, and if you're going to be speaking with Walpole about this matter, I would ask that they, at least if they don't want to have a written communication, call this office and explain to them that they are in total agreement or not in agreement, one way or the other, but we need something from the town of Walpole. Sir?
I'll volunteer to contact them so they can...
Mr. Hajar, from our board, will contact the town of Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar.
We'll get that going.
Thank you very much.
And again, I apologize.
Mr. Collins has also been in contact with Rick Mattson and Walpole, but I don't know what's come of that.
Mr. Collins.
Joe Collins.
Oh, Joe.
Joe Collins downstairs. He's the one that sends this paperwork to him.
Exactly, exactly. So I don't know that he's got what communication they had other than emailing the agreement, but just so you're aware, there's been some...
Thank you.
Joe Collins's paperwork also states that there has to be a meeting with Walpole, and that's what we're waiting on. So again, no disrespect, and we don't mean to tie this up, but we want to make sure all the cheese is crossed, the i's are dotted, and we're doing it according to the way we should do it. So I don't foresee a problem down the road, but it's H-A-J-J-A-R, by the way. You don't strain your eyes.
I can see.
Well, we'll get this accomplished very shortly, and I apologize for the delays, because I know, Mr. Delisle, you've been at this for quite some time, but we have not been aware of this until the last several weeks, so it's new to us, basically. Thank you both.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. Okay, number two on our list this evening is cemetery deeds for review and signature of the board. Motion? I have a motion to...
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number three, Robert F. Sullivan, Senior, Manager for Xfinity, submitting notice regarding changes in the Stars with a Z Encore and Epic programming for their customers.
Motion to sign.
I have a motion for information to file, and a second, all in favor, all opposed? And with that, we will move on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing at 7:30. Skating Club of Boston, 750 University Avenue, submitting an application for a VIF license, which is volatile, flammable fluids and so on, for a license. Mrs. Bob Hill, would you please read the notice?
Town of Norwood, application for license to store volatile and flammable fluids. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectment of the Town of Norwood will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in Room 34, Selectmen's Chambers, Norwood Town Hall, on VIF license application of Skating Club of Boston, Norwood, Mass, for storage of 6,000 gallons of propane above ground at 750 University Avenue, Norwood. Plan is on file with the Town Clerk, Room 32, Norwood Memorial Municipal Building, and available for inspection. Board of Selectment by Polly Bishop, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Bob Hill. Gentlemen, just for the record, before we begin, will you both give us your names and your positions?
Jonathan Myers, Senior Project Manager at J. Callen Associates.
John Holmes with Devaney Energy.
Good evening to both of you. I just want to give us a brief overlay of what we're trying to do.
So they rented some temporary heaters just for the winter, and they're 4 million BTU heaters, and they need two 1,000-gallon tanks for the temporary heat, just till, I think, probably spring.
Yes.
So it's two containers of...
So these, there's three heaters, each would take 2,000.
Okay, so it's a total of six containers.
6,000 total.
And this is to heat the building while they're doing interior work and putting the walls and ceilings together and so on and so on. Thank you, anything else? Gentlemen? We've done this on several occasions now over the last couple of months, and strangely enough, they're all 1,000-pound tanks times six. So this is exactly the same as we've done for the last couple. What's important to note also, just for the general public, is there are rules and regulations that govern this by the state, and the Fire Department, Lieutenant John Cody of our Fire Department, our Fire Prevention Officer, has signed off on this, and he sees no problem. That's the last step in the procurement of your gas to keep everybody warm. Do we have a motion if there's no questions?
Just a question.
Just a question to them. Are they, in the spring, what are the plans? Is it to permanent gas or...
Yeah, so there's a permanent gas command. We're back at the building, we just need to wait for that connection to be crossed to Miley Brown when the connection's made.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hajar.
Seeing no public questions, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you for that, I was going to do that, but I guess, whatever.
Nice for motion.
Well, we had to ask questions of the board members before we close it to the public. Seeing no one from the public, I'll take a motion to close the meeting, the hearing, rather.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Vote of the board, recommendation?
To approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know that they're going vertical down there at the skating club. High iron is manifest.
Yes, it's exciting to watch.
Yeah, it really is.
We're having the talking-off ceremony tomorrow morning.
That's terrific.
8:00 AM.
It's going to be 8:00 AM, yes.
You gonna be there, Mr. Chairman, you gonna be there?
I will be there.
Might be raining, but see you there.
Thank you both. And again, we have one more appointment this evening that's at 7:45, but before we get to that, good evening, Mary, before we get to that, I'll just move along, if we can, to number four under new business. Tony Mazuko, General Manager, Town of Norwood, submitting request to the board to declare as surplus DPW truck, it's a 1999 International Model 470 truck, and allow that truck to be auctioned with proceeds returning to the general fund. Apparently, it's seen its day, and they want to move that along if they could, rather have it hanging in the parking spot somewhere, sell it off, and whatever funds are received, it will go into our budget, general fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Per the information that we've received extensively on this, I make a motion we approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve this transaction and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number five, Dennis M. Drummy, Senior, 210 Hampden Drive, submitting application to erect a Christmas crush on the Calm Common on Washington Street across from the Baptist Church near the bus kiosk as in previous years from 12/7/19 until 1/4/20.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve and a second from Mr. Hajar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number six, William G. Brooks, III, Norwood Police Department, submitting notice of a liquor violation report for the Shamrock Pub. Detective Green investigated and found evidence to support a violation. Does the board choose to have a hearing?
Motion to set a hearing, Mr. Chairman, do you need a date?
We've agreed primarily on a date, November 5th is the next available date, we can do that.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to hold a public hearing regarding the violation on November 5th. All in favor?
Just a comment.
Sir, Mr. Hajar?
The previous history will be known to us at the time of the hearing, the guidance?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have all the background, any other offenses and thoroughity and so on and so on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll have all the ammunition we need. So I have a motion and a second for a November 5th hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Judith Howard, Norwood Historical Commission, submitting request to schedule an appointment with the board regarding the restoration of Oak View. Before we get into that, I just want to make my own personal comments. Town Meeting has already taken up this position on this, and they voted in a different way. What the Historical Commission would like to do is have permission to go to the Community Preservation Group and allocate funds to purchase the building. The current asking price is $1.5 million. The current owners, I don't know how far along they are with the project, but I personally feel that Town Meeting has spoken, it's moving along, and I don't personally agree with this proposal to have them before us. Questions or answers from the board, comments?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, I think it probably, if the town is at all interested in purchasing a property of this kind, excuse me, through the CPC and with CPA funds, it probably is a matter for the CPC. So perhaps such a conversation ought to start there, although it actually probably ought to start with the seller. But I don't really see the need for us to have a meeting on this right now.
I do not either. I agree with that, I think it should first and foremost start with the owner of the property, and if he agrees to this, the second step would be to take it to the Community Preservation Committee. Any other comments? Mr. Hajar?
In general, I support what Judith is at least putting on the table for discussion purposes. I just wish this had been done months ago.
Mm-hmm.
It would just seem to me that it would be hard to go back now, after so many people supported the zoning change that would allow for the exterior to remain as is and actually refurbished, but allow the interior to be, you know, divided up into potential condos. I just, I think we're a little late to the table on it, so it's hard to understand what we would have for it other than to have it as a great piece of property from historic nature, which I understand her position, but I just think we're a little bit late to the table in this one.
Thank you for that. And I personally think, you know, how much can the taxpayer take? I know it's community preservation money, but it's still a million and a half dollars, assuming it's a million and a half dollars. But we've gone through an override, we have water rate increases, we have tax increases, we have things coming at us left and right, the taxpayer, and we're looking on the horizon for the possibility of building a multimillion-dollar facility to replace the Copley Middle School. So unless there was an absolute dire need, I don't necessarily support this. But again, as my colleagues spoke, this should really start somewhere else, not here at the Board of Selectment. Thank you.
Motion to table request, or do you need any motion at all?
Why don't you give me a motion for that effect?
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you. And Mary will be with you very shortly. Thank you for standing by. Under additional new business, Michael Thornton, the Ponson Valley Sunrise Rotary Club, submitting request to place a banner across Washington Street in the area of J Street from November 1st of this year until November 14th to advertise Taste Norwood, Taste, excuse me, Taste Dedham to Norwood, being held on November 14th at Mosley's on the Charles 50 Bridge Street in Dedham. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I think, I'm a member of the club, as is Mr. Hajar, I know Mr. Thornton has sent in the request. I do believe that this office has been in contact with Mr. Thornton about the requirements for a banner. We have specifications on a banner that's placed in that location, so just if we, Mr. Thornton is aware of what's needed, would we be okay if we wanted to, to approve this request, subject to his, subject to the signed meeting of specifications? Is that fair? Okay.
Before we take any kind of a formal vote, I have one question. Is that time period available? It is available. So do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Second.
I have a motion to approve this request and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Mary Paz, P-A-Z, if you'd like to take a seat.
Sure. Thank you very much for seeing me, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mary. Mary Paz, 25 Heaton Avenue, is here to request an interview to be appointed to the Norwood Cultural Council, and it's my understanding, you can have a seat.
I was going to say, I have my, I don't know if you saw my resume, I brought copies of my resume.
Okay, thank you very much for that. But you have already met with the Cultural Council.
Yes, I went to one of their meetings.
And it's my understanding that they would like to have you on board with them.
Yes.
And it's also my understanding that you very much would like to be a part of the Cultural Council.
Yes, yes, I would.
So with that said, questions from the board? Mr. Hajar?
Well, first, it's a pleasure to meet you, and this wasn't meant to cause any delays or anything, but I think it's a good practice for us to know and hear from people that want to provide community service, which I think is great. We don't get enough of people like yourself to volunteer for different boards and commissions, so it's great. I welcome you. What got you interested in the Cultural Council?
Thank you.
No, what got you into...
Oh, what got me? Oh, well, I'm an artist, and I've also had many years of experience working in children's museums, and I not only created exhibits, but I organized cultural programs in the community in Dallas, and mostly in the Dallas area when I was there. And we worked with the Indie Association of North Texas, we worked with the Asian Museum, and it was just great. We'd have street festivals, our museum was very tiny, but these other museums were very big. And it was just, I just loved it, and my exhibits were cultural exhibits within the museum, and I feel that Norwood has a great variety of different cultures. I myself am Lithuanian and, you know, so I just thought that would be great. And I've also, I have an art, I have a studio over in Winsmith Mills, and I've noticed that the artists aren't as involved in the community as they could be, because they don't know what opportunities they are, they're kind of in silos. And I've spoken to a couple of artists that are over at the Percival Brewing area, you know, Space Center, and they would be very interested in something like an open studios like they have in other towns, which I would love to, you know, introduce to Norwood, too, where the artists in Norwood would have their studios open for the weekend or whatever. People can go in and visit and see what they're doing. Artists who work from their homes could invite people, too, and it's just a, it's just a great thing, people love to go to those things, and I know people go from other towns to other towns, too. I think it's just a great opportunity. So I have a lot of interest, so.
I thank you for volunteering, you have a great background, I think you'd be a great asset to the Norwood Cultural Council, so good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hajar. Any comments, Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, thank you. Mary, thanks for coming in. Like Mr. Hajar, I agree, it's great to have people come in and talk to us when they express an interest in the volunteer board, so. And I can already, I can already tell you, you're a font of ideas here, and you, the Cultural Council could indeed serve as a great conduit to the artistic community. Really, we shouldn't hide our light under a bushel basket, and we have a lot of really, really talented artists who work here every day in this town, and the Cultural Council can help give them entree to the rest of the town and the town to them.
Right.
So I'm actually enthusiastic about your candidacy. You know the other members, Denise Kylie and Kate Sebby Dunn?
Well, I've only, you know, they didn't introduce themselves, it was, you know, you know, people in the community were invited to come in, and I think one other person, myself, showed up, and that, you know, it wasn't like a big meeting.
Okay.
So, and I know Leah O'Leary, she's the one actually that was prodding me, too, and I know Kate Sebby Dunn, and the other names, you know, I didn't catch them because they didn't introduce them. And I was, the other thing that I was concerned about is, I mean, I really feel like they want, that this council really wants to do a lot. They were talking about, they had, I guess, given out, and I filled it out, months ago, a survey, asking people in Norwood what they wanted to see the council do, what they wanted to see happen, and so they were talked about that and trying to figure out how to shift the emphasis. And so I went to the council's website on the town, and there's nothing there. There's like no minutes, nothing, so I really think that they do need some help, and so I'd really be happy to help them do that.
Yeah, that's great. And Cultural Councils have been around on the Commonwealth for a long time, decades.
And people don't know about it.
They're not giving a whole lot of money to appropriate, but as you sort of, actually, you're sort of leading us into a more productive area when you talk about volunteering to do other things in the connection between artists and the community that don't simply involve appropriation of $1,000 here and $1,000 there, so.
Right. Right.
So that's really where I think the Cultural Council can serve a great purpose to the town, and they have been lately.
Yeah.
Under Kelly Otamato's leadership. She's moved out of town, so she...
Yes, I know. She's very, she was dynamic at the meeting and stuff, so... But yeah, that, I think, is good. And not just the artists, and of course, I'm an artist, so it concerns me, but other groups, too. And I know that there are some cultural groups that are readily available, like at the library, like the Indian community. And I worked a lot with the Indian community, and I just love the culture, the Henna and all that. But I think that we can move even beyond that, too. And I know that some communities are going to be more of a challenge because they don't always stick around on weekends. From what I understand, some of them go into Boston and Rock Creek to their churches. So trying to, to develop an interest, you know, and for them to share their, you know, their culture with us would be great.
Very good. Well, I intend to support your candidacy, so...
Well, thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Howard?
I just said the same things that cohorts have said, and that is welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm excited.
Now, Mary, before I take a formal vote, I'd like to ask you a personal question. Have you always lived in Norwood?
No, I mean, I grew up in Norwood, and then I went away after college. And I went to Texas for one year to Dallas, and I came back 28 years later. I tell people I kept missing my plane, you know. But I got married and had kids, and I was kind of stuck there until, I just hate to say this, but my ex-husband passed away, and then I could move back because I needed to keep my kids near him, just, you know, the relationship, so... And that happened, and I was like, I'm back to Massachusetts.
Well, I want to roll the clock back 54 years, when I was in high school.
Right.
And I'm looking at you, and I think, if, I know what I'm talking about, I can see your brother Steven.
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, we talked about that, Steven. Yep, Steve's my oldest brother. Paul's my second brother, and Kathy Barnes and Steve got married.
Correct, both classmates.
Yeah, right, they are. So you had your 50th a couple of years, so we just had ours...
We're pushing 55 next year, so...
I know, we just had our 50th, uh...
We'll quickly get off that subject.
The sooner the better, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you know, 50 is the new 20.
So if everybody is satisfied with Mary's position and resume, can I get a motion?
So moved. Motion to approve or second?
I have a motion to approve and a second.
Motion to appoint, I'm sorry, motion to appoint, I guess.
Motion to appoint, we've got a gentleman. I have a motion to appoint Mary to the Cultural Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mary, I think you're gonna bring a lot to the board. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I want to thank you, Christina, for reaching out to me. I found your email. My daughter was visiting last week, so I didn't read emails, so... Thank you again, gentlemen. Good night.
Thank you again, Mary. Next, we have a manager's agenda, but we do not have a manager tonight. He's in Nashville, Tennessee, along with some other town employees, including Mr. Cooper. So with that, I'd like to start with the Selectmen's Agenda. Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One is I would like to thank the town meeting members for coming to last Thursday's date. We didn't have a call in the time before, but I'm awfully glad we finished it up. There was a lot of work that got done. Appreciate it, and doing your civic duty as required, what everyone signed up for, so thank you for that. Two things for everybody on the board, just for reference purposes, for upcoming agenda items. One is the rules and regulations for the Moore's House. We're gonna wait till Bill gets back next week. It'll be in everybody's packet this weekend for discussion. I had a community meeting down at the Moore's House. Thirteen people, individuals showed up, very enthusiastic. Very glad to see the town stepping forward to do this. So I incorporated many of their recommendations into it, and if there's any questions you folks have over the weekend, we can talk about it. The second is a proposed consolidated facilities department MOU between this board and the school committee. One of the things that we have been talking about, everyone, we seem to be moving along quickly now. We're doing some financial analysis that we hope we will have ready by the end of this month. But one of the requirements voted by the committee is for this board and the school committee to have a signed MOU by the end of the calendar year. So Mr. Maloney and I can talk about that, if not next meeting, at some upcoming short meeting because we need to get this off our list so that people know what we're doing.
I personally would like to see it signed next week when Mr. Plask goes back, but I think this, we want to get the ball rolling as quickly as possible, if we can.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Nothing further this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, like Mr. Hajar, I just want to express thanks gratitude to town meeting members for completing their task last week. I think a lot of, a few, several really good things got done. We have an elevator in this building that has to get replaced in its entirety, and it took, it's gonna take a lot more money than we originally appropriated. Town meeting understood that and voted to do so. Ditto on the fire engine that Chief Maurice talked about earlier this evening. We had a couple of, and the East Walpole Cemetery Initiative got approved as well. I do think that's a good thing, so... Mr. Chairman, you and I used to engage in a little historical repartee from time to time, and we haven't had a chance to do that in a while. This one you might enjoy. This will be very brief, but looking, looking back through Norwood's history. So in December of 1972, this board received a letter from Dr. Philip Coakley, superintendent of schools. There was at the time a, a problem up at the high school with parking. A lot of students wanted to drive their cars to the school. There wasn't enough parking. There were no parking signs in certain places. It would have been strategically advantageous to the students. They didn't like that, but the Selectmen didn't want to change it. So Dr. Coakley was just throwing out an idea, and he wondered if it would make sense, and it's in the minutes of a December meeting, '72, if we took Shattuck Park on Nickel Street and converted it to a parking lot for Norwood High School. So this board, it was just an idea, among others, that Dr. Coakley had to try to resolve this problem. But this board said that it favored ecology, a word we haven't heard for many years around here, ecology, and it wanted to preserve this precious woodsy jewel in the center of town. And so the idea was dismissed, and Shattuck Park remains today a wonderful place to walk through, hike a little bit, walk your dog, and enjoy that little bit of nature in the middle of town. So I think the board did the right thing back in December of 1972 to not convert Shattuck Park to a parking lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maloney, if I could follow up on that also. That property was donated to the town by the Edmund J. Shattuck family. And there's also a caveat in there that said, for any reason, if the town decides to develop that property, then it would revert back to the Shattuck family. So I think a little more homework was necessary back in 1972. But I think we all agree it's best kept the way it is right now. It's a little wooded area where people can walk to or reflect and so on.
We cherish our green spaces, sir.
Yes, sir. So thank you for that. Which brings it to me this evening, and I want to tell the board, and I'm gonna make a motion, and I hope they support it. I took executive privilege. We had a request for a wedding coming up. It was too late to make the agenda and too late to make the late agenda. There are six people who would like to hold a wedding this coming Monday at 4 o'clock in the afternoon for a brief period of time on the Town Common gazebo, and I have verbally okayed that. And I'd like to make a motion that the board formally endorsed that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Was there a shot going to win? There were six people getting married?
There were six people in the entire audience. Two of them would be on the stage.
Oh, okay.
Getting married, with four other witnesses, so...
In that case, I'll...
I don't think we'll be overly burdened, by any means.
In that case, I'll motion to approve.
I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. And lastly...
And vote? We get a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, all opposed? Unanimous. And lastly, Bishop Gene Jackson Luma is the senior pastor of Norwood's Community of God Church, Church of God, and it's located at 190 Vanderbilt Avenue here in Norwood. He's been down there for several years now, and it strictly sends the word of God to the Haitian community, both here in Norwood and surrounding towns. So I want to wish Bishop Jackson Luma a very happy 64th birthday tomorrow. Best of wishes to you, sir. And with that said, that's all I have for this evening. Which brings us up to a motion. If there's nothing else on the agenda, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you for watching. We will be back next week for another session of Board of Selectment. So there you go. See you next week.